Or we could just start. Hello. Let's just go and get started. All right, I'll call this meeting to order. The October 15th, 2019, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Thank you all for being with us. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. For our invocation this evening, I'd like to share some words from an invocation that was written by Rabbi David Saperstein. Eternal God, you ennoble our lives by empowering us to do your work here on earth in creating a world of justice and peace for all. We pray for our country, that it may be a beacon of freedom, human rights, and opportunity. The protector of this precious earth, which you have entrusted to our care, may your name be invoked to inspire and unify our nation. We ask your blessing on all the leaders of our nation, that they may lead wisely and with civility, and work together for the common good. These things we ask, in the sunshine of renewed dreams, committed that the torch of hope shall pass from hand to hand, from heart to heart, until the radiance of peace and righteousness for all of God's children shines to the ends of the earth. Amen.
We wanted to take a moment this evening to, with great sadness, recognize the passing of Rodney Hasty, a dedicated public servant who served as a chief assistant district attorney in Buncombe County, starting in 2015. We wanted to take a moment to extend support and condolences to his family, his colleagues in the DA's office, and the many people across our community who mourn his passing. Please join us in a moment of silence, a moment of support for his family and friends and colleagues.
Thank you, Chancellor. All right, I'd like to announce that anyone who's attending the meeting this evening, who used our county parking garage or used public transit to attend this meeting, can receive validation for your parking pass or transit pass from one of the officers who is here this evening. Just feel free to see them on the way out of the meeting. It will be valid for today only. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? And does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at the meeting this evening. Okay, we come to the consent agenda and approval of the agenda. We need to, there's been a request to remove the public hearing on the rezoning request from this, from the agenda this evening. I think it'll be rescheduled for a future meeting, but it's not ready to be discussed tonight. And we also would like to move, we'd like to have a brief, a very brief closed session at the beginning of the meeting, so I don't believe there's any reason to have a closed session at the end of the meeting. So we'll move that with the approval of the Commission to have a brief closed session to consult with an attorney at the beginning of the meeting. We anticipate it will last only about 10 minutes or less. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the public hearing and inclusion of a brief closed session to consult with an attorney at the beginning of the meeting? And, any members of the public, well, let's first see if there's a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Are there any questions from any members of the public about the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, as I mentioned, we do need to have a brief closed session. The purpose is to consult with an attorney.
So you just need to make a motion under North Carolina Journal Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, is there a motion based on the statute that Ms. Hockaday just referenced?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned to a closed session. I expect we'll be back in 10 minutes or less. But unfortunately for folks in the room, the mics are not going to be working properly, so I'm just going to ask all the Commissioners and anybody who's speaking to please just, you know, project as well as you can. And, so everyone speak up for the meeting tonight, all right? And I don't think this is going to get fixed for the meeting tonight, all right? So sorry about that, Stephanie, but thank you for being here, and we'll come back to you.
That's all right. I hope it's not my fault that the...
Yeah, you blew it when you got up and you shorted it out.
We appreciate all the attempts to make it work. I appreciate having an opportunity to talk tonight about the work that's implemented by the Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority to attract overnight visitors to the community. The BCTDA is a public entity with the public purpose of attracting overnight visitors to create customers for our local businesses, provide jobs, generate taxes for revenue and facilities for the people who live in Buncombe County. I'm presenting this report on behalf of the BCTDA, and our Board Chair Gary Froba is here with me tonight. The BCTDA was created by North Carolina state law to administer the proceeds of the occupancy tax. The Board is appointed by the County Commission and the City Council, and one seat is appointed by the Chamber of Commerce to build a base of expertise to guide the investment of the occupancy tax for its greatest benefit. The annual report and the sales and marketing plan is included in your packet, and it's available online for the public on our community website, www.AshvilleCVB.com. This year, 115 new tourism businesses were onboarded to receive free partner benefits, and that brings the total number of tourism partner businesses we serve to almost 1,300. Of course, everything we do is focused on attracting people to visit and connecting them to local businesses. These local businesses represent an exciting array of experiences that are enjoyed by residents and visitors alike. They are independent retailers, artists and musicians, food and beverage professionals, health and wellness, cultural and outdoor attractions, and I have to tell you, we have absolutely every kind of innovative tour that you can imagine, including hiking tours, history, yoga, food, bike, and literary tours. The CVB offers programs to help develop and retain tourism businesses. 350 people attended our annual meeting in September. We offer the hospitality outlook in the winter to forecast upcoming trends, and the National Tourism Week Summit brings tourism partners together for educational programs. All of these events are generously supported by our host venues. We also offer networking that builds relationships, including a holiday party and a summer social. Each of these events also has a charitable component. We partnered with the Renaissance Hotel on Toys for Tots Drive with a holiday party, and we collected 250 backpacks during our summer social. Last year, Explore Asheville achieved recognition as a trusted source for Google, which means that we're able to update Google search results for Buncombe County businesses. We hosted a webinar and two workshops to teach partners how to optimize their presence on Google products, and we launched a program to enhance Google search results for Buncombe County businesses. Our new ad agency, 360I, in Atlanta and New York, presented a free day-long marketing seminar that was available to any resident of Buncombe County, and more than 200 people representing small businesses and nonprofits of all types attended. We also offer CVB 101 orientation every month to help tourism entrepreneurs make the most of our sales and marketing programs and connect with people who visit to spend money in their businesses. Tourism-related businesses get a free page on exploreashville.com, which is attracting about 5 million user sessions every year. We also stay in touch with the community through our industry website, AshevilleCVB.com. All of the BCTDA board materials, financial statements, performance reports are posted here, along with research, sales and marketing plans, and any presentations that are given at events. There's a special section for the tourism management and investment planning process that I talked to you about a couple of months ago. We also distribute a newsletter monthly and maintain a community Facebook page. So in total, we hosted 27 events that were attended by 1,400 local people last year. Our team also engages in community service. You can see us here, working at the community garden in Black Mountain and helping with downtown cleanup, and you can see some pictures from the backpack drive and the Toys for Tots drive. We're in our fourth year of providing funding for festivals, events, and seminars, funded with revenue that we earn from advertising on exploreashville.com, and last year, we were able to provide $185,000 to 39 local organizations. So moving on to our program of work that attracts overnight visitors to Buncombe County, as you know, 25% of the occupancy tax revenue is dedicated to the Tourism Product Development Fund. The TPDF has become the largest source of grant funding in western North Carolina prior to the creation of the Dogwood Foundation, and of course, 75% is invested in tourism promotion that attracts customers to local businesses and provides the public benefit of creating jobs and tax revenue. And that's a portion of the occupancy tax that funds our marketing programs, which I will touch very briefly on in just a few minutes. The Product Development Fund was implemented in 2001 and has awarded $44 million to 39 community projects, including $10 million that was awarded in 2018. Of course, you're all familiar with the ANCA Recreation Destination grant that was provided in partnership with U, totaling $6 million. The North Carolina Arboretum received additional funding for lights and parking totaling $905,000. The National Innovation Hub at the Center for Craft is opening next month. They received a gift of $975,000. The YMI Cultural Center will be improved through a grant of $800,000, and we waived the matching funds requirement for this project that will help them become more economically sustainable as they build out a space for meetings and events. The LEAF Community Arts Organization is building a LEAF Global Arts Center that will be a really vibrant addition to the block that is based on music and culture and interactive experiences for kids, and that received $705,000. And the, there will be an African-American Heritage and Cultural District project at Stevens Lee to preserve and present the, the history of the students who attended school there. That received $100,000 also with the matching money requirement waived. Instead of providing a grant for the African-American Heritage Trail, we offered a partnership to support development of the trail system, but also to maintain it as part of our wayfinding system in perpetuity. And our team is working with the community to preserve and present African-American heritage with a website that will complement the trail. The TPDF is also providing funding to expand the wayfinding system. We updated the downtown system with all of the changes this year, and our design team held input sessions for stakeholders in the River Arts District, and recently shared this proposed design that will be implemented at the conclusion of construction. A few months ago, I presented an overview of our Tourism Management and Investment Plan. This planning process represents a monumental shift in the approach of deciding how to invest this sort, this resource within the mandate of the law that created it. It is typically, typically, whoops, we lost a slides again. We good? It has typically been an application-based process, but the team focuses on three important differences. The first is public input to prioritize opportunities and challenges. The second is a collaboration with public entities to develop projects for investment. And the third and most important is to plan for a 10-year period of investment so that we can accomplish bigger and more significant projects. We are entering the discovery phase that will focus on meeting with public entity teams. Those meetings have already begun to be scheduled, so that we can really dig into urban planning strategies that will help manage the impacts of tourism while continuing to harness the benefits. The Phase One Report will be presented next Wednesday at the Tourism Management Forum, and I hope that we will see you there. The biggest benefit of the BCTDA is created by the destination advertising that expands the customer base for local businesses of all kinds. It also raises awareness and creates a favorable image for this community as a place to go to college and start a business and to relocate. Last year, we conducted an extensive search for a new ad agency, and 360I in Atlanta was chosen, and quickly went to work developing new media strategies and creative. 360I has been recognized by Adweek as the breakthrough agency of the year, and we're happy to be able to bring that level of expertise to work for Buncombe County. Explore Asheville also employs dozens of writers, photographers, videographers, and musicians that develop creative content with us in partnership with the agency. The new TV spot that I had planned to show you tonight is also created with a primarily local cast and crew. These are the markets where we are placing television and streaming video. When we say TV ad, it doesn't really mean on the TV anymore. We buy video mostly in two flights, one that starts in the late summer and moves into early fall, and another that is spring into early summer. But we really have an always-on strategy in a media mix that includes all kinds of channels, from paid social to digital search engine optimization, and of course, video. In 20, whoops, they deleted, missing a couple of my slides. We were, we had planned to show you some creative tonight that the AV is not cooperating, so we'll send you a link and provide it on social media channels for the public. But in 2019, we debuted a new tagline, "Let Your Spirit Run Free." Letting your spirit run free means being spontaneous and open, embracing the small and big surprises that Asheville is sure to offer up. The tagline was developed from audience insight research that revealed that potential visitors feel the pressure in the many demands that they face in everyday life, and that they have to do, and that they're craving for an escape to do the things that they want to do. I'm sorry, we can't play the new creative for you, but we'll get that to you. But every dollar that is invested in paid advertising returns $43 in spending at our local businesses, and $3 in sales tax, all within six months of the campaign running. Oh, sorry, these got out of order somehow. That's the new tagline, "Let Your Spirit Run Free." And that's the commercial. Okay, so we'll go past that. So the, the creative is designed to have a long-form video, two 30-second spots and two 15-second spots, to show kind of the breadth and depth of the visitor experience in Buncombe County. And we just filmed additional footage last week that will continue to change the ads. So our media relations is kind of the secret weapon of getting the word out about the businesses that are in Buncombe County. This year, our team secured 587 significant placements that generated 2.3 billion impressions and a publicity value of $35.8 million. Those placements result from our team of three PR professionals doing 960 custom pitches and 755 media touchpoints. We also hosted 57 journalists onsite, so we're creating their visits and, you know, connecting them to artists and makers and musicians and restaurateurs and, you know, all of the businesses that are now able to receive national media exposure from these free efforts, these efforts that are free to them. And here's how it pays off. There are just a few of the high-profile accolades that the team played a role in securing last year. Staying ahead of the headlines and in the mix of these accolades year after year is not an easy task. And just recently, we were able to secure through a special effort to promote Asheville as a top town for music, some very significant placements from Rolling Stone and Jam Base and a list of 10 prominent music publications to support the music industry here and create a more sustainable ecosystem for them. Through it all, the team is on the road at these locations and, media events, there we go, and media events, making connections and sharing stories to keep Asheville and Buncombe County top of mind. Our content and social program is managed in-house at Explore Asheville. Explore Asheville is receiving almost 5 million user sessions a year. We also have a newsletter that's distributed to 120,000 qualified users a month. We've hit 400,000 followers on our social channels. And we've also been, in the past year, developing special content for neighborhoods and other townships around Buncombe County. Here you see an example that's been developed for Black Mountain with the addition of more listings and special photography and new videos, and, you know, strategies to get eyeballs on these pages. The page views for the Black Mountain content have already increased 74%, and we continue to build these out for other areas of the community. Last year, as I mentioned, Explore Asheville focused on improving the way that the destination and our industry partners appear across the Google ecosystem. This has been critical as Google pushes further and further into the travel space. To ensure the region is well-displayed, the team uploaded more than 500 photos and 360-degree images into Google My Business Knowledge Panels. These assets already have been viewed more than 2 million times. We also added more than 50 Google posts to the Asheville Knowledge Panel, receiving more than 4 million impressions. We believe that Explore Asheville should be the voice of the destination at every stage of the visit. That's why we rolled out a new suite of tools for visitors who are already here and on the ground, so let's take a quick look at WelcomeToAVL.com. It's available on both desktop and mobile. You see the tile interface streamlines access to the content and real-time parking availability. This is all the same content, it's the same content for business listings that's available on exploreashville.com, but it's streamlined to make it easier to use and quicker access for local businesses. It also helps move visitors throughout the region, and we hope it will help with repeat visitation and longer stays by enhancing visitor satisfaction and improving awareness of everything there is to see and do. And once you click further into the site, you'll find deeper information to make planning on the ground even easier. Included in WelcomeToAVL.com is a weekly curated list of things to do over the weekend, and this list can easily be accessed on desktop or mobile and printed for distribution at front desks and other points of interest. Our sales team attracts groups to Buncombe County, including meetings, conventions, social groups, tour groups, weddings, and sports. The bedrock of any sales program is person-to-person contact. Last year, our team of five sales managers logged a whopping 12,901 personal contacts. They issued 981 sales leads, an increase of 24%. And we, we had 566 groups commit to hold future events in Buncombe County. That's an increase of 37%. Room nights booked through the CVB represent only those groups that are touched by us, and we know a lot of groups that we interact with go directly to lodging partners. So in the last fiscal year, we booked about 80,000 room nights. They were smaller groups overall, so revenue was down a little bit at $16.5 million, but that doesn't include delegate spending and other off-site investments that these groups make. Sports remains a very high, an important driver for our community. Our, our team works hand-in-hand with the Sports Commission, and Depp Bradford is here tonight. For example, Fed Cup generated $4.9 million of spending with local businesses in just a couple of days that the tournament played here, also giving local kids an opportunity to see world-class tennis players in action. And it was only the, it was the first time in 12 years that a destination was able to host this important event two years in a row. Oat Root is an international cycling event that we were able to attract in partnership with the Sports Commission. They spent $1.4 million with local businesses for this weekend event. The Spartan Race, $6.2 million in total business spending, and the SoCon Championship Tournament, you know, it's spring in Asheville, how, what would it be like without SoCon, brings $5.5 million of spending on that weekend. So that is a very, very brief highlight of the work we do at Explore Asheville. The Explore Asheville team is privileged to represent this community and play a role in attracting customers, providing jobs, generating tax revenue, and developing facilities that benefit the people who live in Buncombe County. The people who visit Buncombe County spend $2 billion a year at local businesses. They generate almost $200 million of state and local taxes, including 31% of sales tax revenue and 19% of property tax revenue. They provide over 27,000 jobs, including 18,000 at tourism-related businesses. So, thank you for having me back. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? All right, I don't see any at this time. Stephanie said, "Thank you for the update," and could you say again, when are some of the upcoming public, public events that folks can attend if they're interested in, you know, being part of the dialogue about all of this?
Yeah, during, during Phase One of the Tourism Management Investment Plan, we hosted three public input sessions. We conducted a community sentiment survey that 2,600 people participated in, and we also did extensive evaluation of current conditions. And so, the Phase One Report will be presented next Wednesday at the Ferguson Auditorium. The program starts at 6:00. We asked the people RSVPs, and we know how many to expect. There's also, on our website, a special section that collects additional feedback and posts all of the meeting times. It will be a place where you can download the full report and download the PowerPoint presentation, and that website is AshevilleCVB.com/tmip.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next item on our agenda is an update from the Family Justice Center, and Diana Sierra is going to tee us off on this item.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners and Manager Pender and staff. I'm Diana Sierra with the Family Justice Center. I want to thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief update on the work that we're doing at the Family Justice Center, both current and then looking ahead to some of our priorities. Before we get started, I also want to thank some of our onsite partners that are here to show support, so Piska Legal Services, the Sheriff's Office, and then also sharing the space and presentation with me will be April Burgess-Johnson from Helpmate and Anhelica from Our Voice. They're going to give some updates from their organizations as well. So, sorry, one sec. So, as you know, the Family Justice Center is one safe place for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, child abuse, and elder abuse to access services. I'm sorry, this clicker's not working.
Turn it off.
Oh.
Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, great, just want to have my slides go. So the Family Justice Center is a part of the Coordinated Community Response to Domestic Violence and Sexual Violence. We have 10 onsite partners that all serve some function in terms of providing services and support to victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, elder abuse, and, and child maltreatment. And a part of the Coordinated Community Response Leadership Council, that represents over 20 different organizations and entities that are working to coordinate services so that survivors have a streamlined, trauma-informed, evidence-based experience throughout their process in terms of seeking safety, healing, and hope. So I wanted to take a brief moment and just talk about three key points. I'm going to talk about FJC data, then I'm going to talk about kind of what our current outcomes and successes are, and then looking ahead. So, for FY, excuse me, so for the first three years of the Family Justice Center being in operation, we just celebrated our, our third anniversary in July. We have served 1,707 new clients who have gone through the Integrated Intake Process, which is a fundamental part of the Family Justice Center model. Those are all new clients served, not returning clients. Those are all new clients served, not returning clients. In FY '19, 690 people accessed integrated services for the first time at the Family Justice Center. That is a 15% increase when you compare the numbers to the previous fiscal year. And in FY '19, 51% of survivors accessed more than one provider at their initial intake. So at their first experience of accessing services at the Family Justice Center, 51% of survivors were able to access more than one organization. In addition, when, excuse me, in addition, 84% of the new intakes that were completed, those survivors identified domestic violence as the primary victimization, and 14% identified sexual violence, sexual assault as the primary victimization. So to move on to some successes and advancements, I wanted to highlight our intake data, our survey data. So after a survivor goes through their initial intake, we asked them if they're willing to complete a survey, and from those surveys' results, we found that 92% of survivors responded that they left with a plan to keep themselves safe, and they knew what to do after they left the FJC after their first initial intake at the Family Justice Center. In addition, 69% this past fiscal year of survivors who completed the survey responded having experienced decreased fear and anxiety just after their first intake, first interaction with us. Some other successes and accomplishments, several years ago, the Governor's Crime Commission created a dedicated funding category for family justice centers and co-located services, and they continue to refer other counties who are interested in family justice centers to the Buncombe County Family Justice Center to see how we operate and learn best practices. In addition, the Buncombe County Family Justice Center was featured, myself and one of our active survivors, that's the Chair of the Survivors Voices Committee, we co-facilitated a national directors call for all of the Family Justice Center directors, and we provided a training on how to do survivor-focused work and how to keep survivors at the center of our decision-making and our programming. So looking ahead, some of our priorities for this current year are our Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Want to thank you all for voting in support of that last year. We have been meeting since November of last year. We have selected a case, and according to this PowerPoint, we were scheduled to do a two-day full case review next week. However, with the passing of Rodney Hasty, who was an active integral member of our team, and per state session law, we're required to have a member of the DA's office at that review. We have decided to postpone and reschedule to give the DA's office some more time to identify the right person for that team. But we're looking forward to getting that rescheduled in the next couple of months and being able to present those findings and recommendations to you all. Also, this upcoming year, this fiscal year, we're going to be focusing on strategic planning, looking at where we want to be in the next three to five years, of course, in step and in line with the strategic planning that's being driven by you all for the county. So now I'm going to hand the floor over to Enhelica Nguyen from Our Voice, who's going to share a little bit more detail about human trafficking and sexual assault services.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the Commissioners, for your support of the Family Justice Center. Sexual violence still continues to be one of the most under-reported crimes in the nation. Having said that, what we found is with the Family Justice Center since its opening in 2016 is that we have seen a marked increase in survivors of sexual violence, not only calling and picking up the phone, but also walking through the Family Justice Center doors. The chart will note what the growth has been. Year 1718 was when the Me Too movement came to light at the national level, and we have not seen a decrease in individuals who've taken those steps to, many times disclosed for the first time, in access services. Another piece that we've seen a tremendous amount of growth is our anti-human trafficking project. If you will note, in 2016, it was when our project was created, and since then, we have experienced a tremendous amount of growth around that, and we continue to see that grow. In fact, if you look at the graph in this quarter of the new fiscal year of 1920, what we've seen is, we've already seen almost half of what we saw last year of human trafficking survivors coming to the Family Justice Center and accessing our services. And we anticipate that those numbers will continue to grow. We don't feel that it's because human trafficking has increased in our area. We feel it's pretty much the same. Anytime you have that recipe of tourism, airports, interstate highways, you know, you are bound to have human trafficking. But what we've found is that as a result of the outreach that Our Voice has been able to do in the community and training on what human trafficking looks like with other service providers, that we have seen an increase in referrals to Our Voice. So, in terms of successes, oh, there you go. So in terms of, so, human trafficking work, and we anticipate seeing that growth, and we will continue to serve. In fact, our human trafficking project is, has been recognized as a state model. In other areas that we have been recognized as a state and national model is our prevention work. One of our most well-known programs is our Bar Outreach Project, which is a project that works with service industry, more particularly alcohol-serving establishments, around how they can play a role in the minimizing of drug-facilitated sexual assault, alcohol being the number-one drug. This has been a project that has been recognized, not only at the state level, but at the national level. At the end of September, we were a part of a national webinar with Prevent Connect, which is, does national work around the prevention of sexual violence, where we not only able to highlight our work through the Bar Outreach Project, we were also able to highlight of innovative ways that we look to partner with different entities around the Bar Outreach Project, the Buncombe County Environmental Inspectors being one of them, where we had a partnership where we trained the environmental inspectors to bring to light the topic of drug-facilitated sexual assault, but also to bring to light about the project. In terms of future focuses and opportunities, very much in the way that we worked with the environmental inspectors around the conversation of drug-facilitated sexual assault, Our Voice also sees an opportunity to work with the environmental inspectors on training them to what to look out for in terms of signs of human trafficking, whether it's sexual human trafficking or labor human trafficking, and so we can work together to be able to provide resources as needed. Another piece, Diana mentioned the part about the FJC being recognized at the state level and national level as well. Another piece that we have that has been recognized at the state level is our Pathways to Prevention Plan. The plan came to light as a result of a coalition of service providers, program leaders, government representatives, educators, youth leaders, and survivors, and many more, who came together to create a multi-year comprehensive plan to help end sexual violence, domestic violence, and child maltreatment. And where we see opportunity, because we are now going into our year two of our plan, is an opportunity for the county to be involved in providing more resources to sustain the work, but in addition, also providing an opportunity to educate the community and outreach around prevention efforts. One of the things that the Pathways to Prevention Coalition just did was create a prevention education guide, which any community member who wants to be involved or who wants to have access to prevention education programming can pick up this resource guide and be able to see which of the programs are tailored to their needs. And the great thing about this guide is that it isn't relegated just to Our Voice, HelpMate, and Mount Child Advocacy Center. We have lots of great community partners that are doing prevention education in their own way, and so the guide will be able to bring light into that as well. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate a moment to be able to uplift the work that we are all doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
I always promise to be our shortest speaker. So, my name is April Burgess-Johnson. I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director for HelpMate. HelpMate is the organization here in Buncombe County that provides safety, shelter, and support to survivors of domestic violence. And I want to thank this Commission for the time and the investment that you've put in to making our community safer and to stopping the tolerance of domestic violence. As you all remember, our Coordinated Community Response began in earnest after a rash of domestic violence-related homicides that landed our community with the dubious ranking of tying for second place in North Carolina for the number of lives lost because of domestic violence back in 2013. After that rash of homicides, community leaders came together and began overhauling systematically, one by one, domestic violence response systems, sexual violence response systems in our community. And part of the outcome of that was to build a giant funnel to try to get victims into appropriate victim services. We did that intentionally because we know that in the year prior to their death, according to national research, only 4% of domestic violence homicide victims had had contact with a program like HelpMate. So we know that there is a very strongly preventative nature to survivors being able to form safety plans with programs like HelpMate. And so what you have in front of you are some numbers to illustrate how well that funnel has worked. If you'll look back in fiscal year 1213, you'll see that HelpMate served about 1,800 survivors. The blue line you see on your graph is the number of people that we served. The orange line is the hotline calls we took, and the gray line there are the safety plans that we formed. The first arrow that you see is when our community began its coordinated community response effort, where we implemented the lethality assessment protocol, where law enforcement are putting victims on the hotline with a HelpMate advocate from the crime scene. We also began the launch of the Enough Public Awareness Campaign, and we saw a pretty significant spike in the number of people that were reaching forward for help, both in person and on our hotline, and forming those emergency safety plans. The second arrow that you see there is the opening of the Buncombe County Family Justice Center. And you'll see that we really took a sharp incline in our ability to do meaningful, long-lasting, and repeat safety plans with survivors, because as a survivor's situation changes, so does their safety needs and the need to plan around them. We wanted to be sure that as we were implementing these programs, that we were responding effectively to all survivors, including the smallest among us. We wanted to be sure that there were effective programs in place to attend to the needs of children exposed to intimate partner violence. We were pleased to be able to partner with Department of Health and Human Services to implement the Safe and Together Protocol, which seeks to support protective parents in their protective capacities, because we know that often it's not only the adult, but also the child, that is impacted by domestic violence in the home. We help survivors to navigate the sometimes complex system of working with child protective services, and we have designated space within our emergency shelter to respond to the needs of children. As we look forward, some of the opportunities for growth and change that we have are twofold. One is that we need to create a seamless experience across all of the systems. We've done a great job of making sure that when a victim comes to the Family Justice Center, they can connect with multiple agencies at the same time. You all are responsible for making that possibility exist for survivors. Almost 2/3 of the people who come to the Family Justice Center interact with more than one system on their very first visit. We need to make sure that when victims go across the street to the courthouse to get protection, that they're offered the same seamless experience, that that process is easy to navigate, is accessible to them, and is coordinated well with the services that we have over at the Family Justice Center. For HelpMate specifically, we know that to continue to reduce domestic violence homicides in Buncombe County, we have to double the capacity of our shelter. Right now, HelpMate has a 20-bed shelter capacity. A community our size needs a 40-bed domestic violence shelter. That's based on the best available national research that we have. So HelpMate is currently searching for our next shelter location, where we can build or renovate a facility. We shelter about 225 people per year. We have the opportunity to shelter twice that many. Right now, we are referring those folks primarily out of county to our smaller rural neighbors, so we're literally exporting our trauma, and we have to find a way as a community to solve that problem, and that's our commitment to you, is to find and locate a larger shelter for our community. None of these system innovations would have been possible without the continued support of the Buncombe County Commission. You all have been there, not just word, but indeed, and we are extremely grateful for that. We hope that you'll keep the foot on the gas and continue to support these important initiatives that serve survivors in our community. I think any of us at this point would be happy to entertain any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for the really great updates. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. Thank you all very much for the work that happens and the update. You mentioned doubling shelter capacity is one priority, and I think creating a similar level of integration as folks move into the court system is another. Anything more specific we ought to be thinking about in terms of, in addition to just continuing support for FJC, what else we can be advocating for in our community around these issues and what next steps might look like?
I think that's a great question. I believe that talking to our colleagues in the court system and encouraging that integration, I believe you all hold important and powerful positions, and I think that expressing your concern and commitment to this increased system integration is an important piece to bring forward. I think Diana might also have some feedback.
Just want, thank you, April. I just wanted to add, so as we're doing our strategic planning process, we're really going to be trying to drill down on our priorities and kind of where we see ourselves in the next three to five, but something that's been emerging recently has been creating a space where older adults can go to for similar services, but that don't fall under the category of intimate partner violence. So we're seeing an increase, as we do an excellent job of getting the word out to the community about our services, we're seeing increased numbers of older adults coming to seek services and support that fall outside of intimate partner violence. So really looking at, is there an opportunity there? What would that look like? If there's not an opportunity specifically with the Family Justice Center, what other opportunities exist to make sure that those older adults aren't falling through the cracks?
So they're experiencing elder abuse, but not from an intimate partner?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I've just got a comment. I think myself and Brownie and Commissioner Frye were here when we, the county took the steps to, you know, to make this happen, and not us make it happen, but, you know, through the need and the direction of the community. But a couple of things that stuck in my mind, and I don't want y'all to forget them, I want you to continue to tell us about it, is if I'm not mistaken, before, someone that was, you know, in this situation would go and have contact with 21 different people at like eight different places, and my numbers are probably not very far off. And they, it went from a stressful situation to a very toxic stressful situation. And I would like to make sure we don't lose sight of that, that we hear more about how you are improving that, and because everything's under, well, not everything, but most things are under one roof, and I just want to hear more about that. You know, so as y'all have an opportunity to come before us, I don't want you to forget that statistic. I want you to continue to bring it forward and give us more information about those success stories and how, you know, families are, I mean, you know, by getting them help, you know, very quickly is what stops that escalation and, you know, and 20 years later, you know, them being affected. If you reduce that stress immediately, you know, then it helps them for a lifetime. And so I just want to encourage you to continue to bring that forward and remind us of that. And just keep telling us, you know, that these families are getting better quicker and that they're finding help under that one roof. Thanks.
Absolutely. I can certainly commit to doing that moving forward. I think sometimes when you do the systems work, it's easy to kind of focus on opportunities and what's ahead, but a lot is working well, and we have a lot to celebrate. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all for...
Thank you all for the life-saving work that you perform in our community. I'm, as we know, there's been several well-documented, well-covered in the media stories of loss of life through domestic violence situations in our county, particularly in our communities of color. As part of your strategic planning process, is there some conversation, some discussion about how you start to reach out to those communities of color and start to build those trusted relationships so that they come to you before they experience tragedy and loss of life?
Absolutely. So, to clarify, we have not started our strategic planning process, but that will be an item that we really try to dig deep and drill down on. I know each individual onsite partner has done some of their own work. I know HelpMate has reached out to the people of color and tried to get specific feedback as it relates to accessing services at the Family Justice Center. The question moving forward is how can we do that again in a coordinated way so that we're all sharing the information and really trying to move the needle in that way? What I will also say is that when we look at our demographic data, our demographic data does reflect our, our FJC intake data does reflect general demographics for the county. So, 14% of individuals seeking services at the Family Justice Center identifies African-American, black, which is reflective of our community. But again, how do we move that number to make sure that it's as inclusive of a space and environment as possible? So, absolutely, that's definitely will be a priority.
All right. Hey, thank you again for being here this evening and for the important work everyone's doing, and the great update this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, the next item up is a public hearing. It's consideration of text amendments on traffic studies and subdivision standards. And Jillian Phillips from our Planning Department will be presenting this, along with Nate Pennington, it looks like.
Good evening. We came before the pre-meeting a while ago regarding these two amendments. So, I'm just going to review them real quick for you. If you have any questions, let me know. Just to remind you, it's two separate public hearings, one for the traffic study amendment and then one for the special family revisions. So, we have two proposed subdivision amendments. One relates to our traffic impact studies. It's a revision to when traffic impact studies are required as part of the subdivision approval process. And the second one is a clarification of the requirements for a special subdivision, and then a revision to the requirements for a family subdivision. So, for the traffic impact study requirements, just to give you a little history, in 2017, we added a requirement for those studies for subdivisions of 300 lots or more. In 2018, the zoning ordinance was revised to require traffic impact studies for planned unit developments with 75 more, 75 or more units. So, the proposed amendment would align those two ordinances, the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And we provided the text amendment to the North Carolina Department of Transportation and the City of Asheville. We do have some streets that are City of Asheville streets that serve land that is in unincorporated Buncombe County. So, for any approval for a access, it would go through the City of Asheville's Transportation Department as opposed to going through NC DOT. The proposed amendment was reviewed, discussed, and a public hearing was held by the Planning Board, and they recommended the proposed amendment to the board. So, again, we're changing the threshold so it aligns with the zoning ordinance. And then, we added a requirement that if a subdivision is going to generate a decrease in level of service to D or lower, you either have to submit your driveway permit from NC DOT or your approval from the controlling municipality when you submit for preliminary approval. Currently, developers usually bring their preliminary approval before the Planning Board prior to getting that DOT driveway permit. So, what we're saying is if there's a decrease in level of service to D, you have to do that beforehand. So, DOT and usually, and the City of Asheville have time to review what that development is going to do to the road. And just to give you an idea of level of service, so for a level of service A, B, and C, it's pretty free-flowing. It's pretty stable. But you can see D is where the development would start to affect the traffic flow and affect capacity on the road. So, are there any questions about the traffic study amendment? No? So, the second amendment is for special and family subdivisions. Special subdivisions, it's a clarification of when the three-year time limitation on further subdivision is triggered. And family subdivision, it's a revision to the requirements for a family subdivision. So, for special subdivisions, a special subdivision is three lots or less. And as part of the requirement, you cannot further subdivide those three lots within a three-year time period unless you meet the minor subdivision requirements. So, we had some confusion in the development community. So, we're just adding a clarification that if you have a two-lot subdivision, you can create one more lot without having to meet those minor subdivision requirements. So, for family subdivision, currently, the regulations allow you to have up to five lots for family members. And what developers were doing is creating an additional three lots as a special, creating an eight-lot subdivision that didn't go through the review process, and they didn't submit plans for roads or have to meet any of the road standards. So, our proposed revision is to hold it at five lots total and allow up to three lots for sale. So, you can have any combination of family and sale lots, as long as you don't have more than three lots for sale. And those are the two amendments, proposed amendments.
Okay.
Any questions?
Senior, at this point, so let's do two public hearings for each of the text amendments. First, I'll open at 6:22 the public hearing for consideration of the text amendments regarding the traffic impact studies. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? All right, I will close the public hearing at 6:22. Is there a motion regarding the text amendment for the traffic impact studies?
Do we have to make two, or did you say that?
Let's just do a separate public hearing and separate vote on each text amendment.
So, I'll move approval.
There's a motion and second in support of approval of the text amendment regarding traffic impact studies. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm going to open a public hearing, the public hearing for consideration of the text amendment for special and family subdivisions at 6:22. Is there, are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Yelton?
The reason I didn't get up a minute ago on the other one is because what I'm going to say on this one applies to the other one. I was born and raised on Jupiter Road. I got the same road now that I had when I was six years old. And I bet you there's been over 1,000 houses built within a mile of my house. The traffic flow from the housing is a big part of the problem. But the other part of the problem is, we've not done anything to our roads, period. We don't even know the sides of them now. You can't even see how you're getting out. But anytime you do anything to add time to building a house, what do you do to the price of housing in Buncombe? Anytime, you increase the time. Do a traffic study, subdivide, do a plan. Anytime you do that, you're driving the cost of housing up. So, it sounds good, it reads good, it gives somebody something to do and a committee to serve on. But all it does is drive the cost of housing up. And guess what? Right next to my house, there's a new lot, and I just found out a while ago, they're selling the lots for $60,000 an acre. Then you got to put the well in and the septic tank. So, we're going to start controlling how you divide it. If you want to slow down the growth in the county and keep this wonderful, beautiful countryside that everybody talks about, look at doing something like letting a five-acre piece of property be declared non-developable. And if you develop it, you have to pay higher taxes and all the back taxes when you decide to develop it. You might see some of the families holding on to their property and not subdividing it. So, that's just some thoughts. Of course, you won't listen to anything I say. Maybe you'll do it two years later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:25. Is there a motion regarding the text amendment for special and family subdivisions?
So, move?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Ms. Pender, do you have any items under the county manager's report?
I do. I do have two items. I'll ask for Nate Pennington to talk briefly about the quasi-judicial training that's coming up.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just wanted to report on something that we've had a lot of interest in. October 24th, Dave Owens from the School of Government is going to be coming up here to conduct a quasi-judicial training, a legislative update, and then also to go over a couple of other items. We just talked to David Owens yesterday. I also found out he's retiring, so this is one of the last opportunities to speak to him. But we've also invited all six municipalities in the county, and we're happy to tell you that we're nearing about 100 people. This includes boards of adjustment, planning boards, elected officials like yourselves, and also some Historic Resources Commission members from the various municipalities to give you an update, an opportunity to meet folks and participate in a training session. We've worked to get some information out to you. This will be held at the first floor, 200 College Street, 1 o'clock in the afternoon to 4:30. We understand everybody has a busy schedule. We'll have name tags for you, rest assured. If you need to leave at any time, or if you'd like to drop in at any time, we'll have parking available in the parking deck. And yeah, that's pretty much it, and we'll see you there. And let us know, let me personally know, Sybil or any of our staff, if there's anything we can do for you or any accommodation, or if you have any questions.
All right, thanks, Nate. Thank you.
Thanks. My next one today is Dr. Mullendorf. She's going to talk briefly about the Legionnaires' outbreak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we've heard a lot of questions from the community about the Legionnaires' disease outbreak, and we wanted to take this opportunity to educate you as a commission, but also the public at large. So, we have some slides. So, just to give a brief overview of Legionnaires' disease, if we're all not experts now, it's a form of lung infection pneumonia that's caused by the Legionella bacteria. And most healthy people, when they're exposed to Legionella, are not going to become sick. But there are higher risk groups, such as people who are 50 and older, people who are chronic and former smokers, people who have chronic lung conditions, and those who have weakened immune systems, either from chronic medical conditions or because of certain medications they take. And the Legionella bacteria is found naturally in freshwater, and it is spread through aerosolized water droplets, so tiny water droplets. And it becomes a health concern when it grows and spreads in man-made water systems. And so, commonly, we think about things like cooling towers on buildings, or hot tubs, or decorative fountains. And so, just to set the stage for the daily work that our communal disease staff do in our health department and every local health department, you know, every day, we get reports in from local medical providers and laboratories reporting on communal diseases and conditions that are mandated by law, they report. And so, in the state of North Carolina, there are 75 different communal diseases and conditions that these providers and labs have to report to us. And for those reports, our communal disease staff investigate each report. So, they have to contact the affected individual, contact the medical providers, review medical records, review lab reports, ask many questions to determine, does this case of illness actually meet? Is it confirmed? The diagnosis confirmed? And is there an ongoing source of exposure that puts other people at risk? And then, they enter that information into an electronic system that is then sent to the state for their review and confirmation. And so, the chart at the bottom just shows that, you know, every fiscal year, the number of reported cases that are sent to us, and then through our investigation processes, how many end up being confirmed. And so, that's the role of the local health department. The state Division of Public Health conducts statewide surveillance. So, they're getting reports from all the counties and are able to see the bigger picture if something is going on in a region or statewide. And they provide technical assistance and support when the event expands beyond a single county. And they're always available for consultation at any time. And so, the timeline of this outbreak, again, specific to Buncombe County, on Friday, the 20th of September, we received a report of a case of Legionnaires' disease from a local medical provider. Annually, we see anywhere from five to seven cases of Legionnaires' disease. And so, one case doesn't necessarily, you know, doesn't highlight or make us think there could be an outbreak going on. But then, a couple of days later, on the afternoon of Sunday, the 22nd, three additional suspected cases of Legionnaires' disease were reported to us by a medical provider. And so, our communal disease nurses began investigation. But due to the severity of the illness, they were unable to interview the individuals until the following morning, Monday, the 23rd. And that morning, we also notified the Division of Public Health that we had a cluster of Legionnaires' disease in our community. And so, as we were conducting interviews, the nurses were conducting interviews that day, the Division of Public Health contacted us back mid-morning to say, we're hearing that there might be a possible link to the Mountain State Fair. Can you ask those cases that have been reported to you if they attended the fair? And we were able to confirm that those cases reported to us had attended the fair, and we shared that back with the state. On Tuesday, the 24th, that morning, I sent an alert to local medical providers and telling them, we're seeing an increase in Legionnaires' disease, so please be vigilant. Please, if you have patients who have these symptoms, please make sure you're considering Legionnaires' disease and your, what we call differential diagnosis of illness. And then, that day, the Division of Public Health issued what's called a case definition for an outbreak. So, a case definition is how you know, does this person have, meet the qualifications to be counted as a case of this illness? And so, there is a clinical picture, so what are the symptoms that they have? There's laboratory evidence that shows, yes, they have that infection. And then, in a case of an outbreak, they have, they meet the timeframe in which we're looking and a potential source of exposure. And so, that is created by the state, sent out to all the local health departments for us to be able to determine if a case meets the, falls into the outbreak. And then, that day is the day that the state released a, issued a press release stating that there was a multi-county outbreak of the Legionnaires', of Legionnaires' disease associate, or with a possible link to the fair. So, throughout this time and for the rest of that week, we continued to get multiple cases in and conducting investigations. We were responding to many questions from the public and from the media and from medical providers who were asking for additional guidance and sharing information back to the state and back with medical providers. And we were coordinating with the North Carolina Division of Public Health, with the Department of Ag and the staff at the Western North Carolina Ag Center, and with the CDC, who came on site. They were conducting an assessment of the site, environmental investigation, and also an epidemiological investigation. So, they conducted a case control study to determine what was it about the people who got sick and attended the fair, and the people who attended the fair and didn't get sick? What was the difference? What were the things that increased the risk of Legionnaires' disease? What were the things that increased the risk of Legionnaires' disease? And so on October 3rd is when the state, after surveying the population, determined that the individuals who got sick were more likely to have visited the Davis Event Center, were more likely to have attended the fair in the latter half of its happening, and were more likely to walk by or spend time at the hot tubs. And so this is what we call an Epi-curve. This is kind of hard to read, but what it basically shows is the box over to the left shows that was the timeframe of the Mountain State Fair. And then the bars are the number of cases that had onset on these particular days following the fair. And so this is the type of Epi-curve you would expect from a single point of exposure. There was something that all these people were exposed to, and then we see this huge spike of illness following it, and a decrease in the cases after the incubation period, which is the time from when you were exposed to an organism until you get sick. And so for Legionnaires' disease, we're looking at two weeks. And so you can see when, two weeks after the fair ended, there have been no cases, no new cases of Legionnaires' disease reported. And so this is from the state's website. These are the characteristics of all the affected individuals. And this is as of yesterday. That's the last time they updated their website. So you can see that 69% of the confirmed cases were admitted to the hospital. As I said, Legionnaires' disease can cause a very severe pneumonia, and people can end up in the intensive care unit. We're now up to three deaths as of today. And a majority of people, again, cases were Legionnaires' disease. There's a milder form of Legionella infection called Pontiac fever, and we did see some cases of those. So that's kind of an overview. If we have any specific questions, I can certainly answer this.
All right.
Just a specific question about sort of the risk side of this.
Mm-hmm.
The organism is out there in the world. Is this something the hot tub vendor should have been monitoring more actively theoretically, in terms of their display?
I mean, there's guidance on the CDC website. So over the past, I don't know, decade, there has been an increase in the country of reported cases of Legionnaires' disease. And so the CDC has put out guidance about maintenance of, usually we think about cooling towers, because that's where the big events have tended to happen, in hotels or conventions. But they have issued some recommendations for people who have equipment that could aerosolize water. So there is information out there for people. Yeah. Anything else?
All right, any other questions, commissioners? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Ms. Pender, anything else? Okay. Okay, under new business, the first item is the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Grant, and associate additional staff positions, and Rachel Nygaard will present this item.
Good evening. Rachel Nygaard, I'm the Director of Strategic Partnerships for Buncombe County. This is an item that we had discussion about two weeks ago on October 1st during your pre-meeting. And this is a request for positions. It's a vote that we're putting before you. These are positions related to the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, which has been awarded to Buncombe County through the MacArthur Foundation, the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation, which was previously approved and allocated, added to the budget by this Board of Commissioners. This grant is implemented under the guidance of our local Justice Resource Advisory Council, which is made up of representatives across the criminal justice system and does system-level coordination. And the particular grant is focused on assessing drivers of the local jail population and implementing strategies to reduce the jail population. There are seven strategies within this grant, which are outlined on this slide. We have four primary strategies, as well as three supporting strategies. The primary strategies are deflection at arrest and booking, diversion to behavioral health and substance abuse treatment, enhancing pre-trial services, and implementing efficiencies in case processing. And all of these are undergirded by those supportive strategies, which include data utilization, community engagement, and addressing racial and ethnic disparities. I highlight these so that I can later point out how pre-trial services connects. But before I do that, quick overview of what pre-trial services is. This is a county program that is nested within the Strategic Partnerships Department, which is why I'm here representing this. Pre-trial services has two primary functions. They conduct risk assessments for people who have been booked into the detention facility, and share that information with the judicial officials to help inform their release decision. So setting bonds, whether somebody can safely, whether they're likely to be able to safely wait in the community for the disposition of their case or need to be detained within the jail. The other thing that pre-trial does is provide supervision, so monitoring the release conditions as ordered by the courts. We have 14 current positions within pre-trial services. And this grant, here we go, creates an expansion, a new function for pre-trial, which is to conduct those risk assessments I talked about a minute ago at a different phase, slightly earlier phase of the process. So conducting rather than after booking, when somebody is already in the jail or detention facility, moving that up, and conducting it on a 24/7 basis at the magistrate level prior to booking or pre-booking. The intended outcome of this strategy is to reduce the number of people who enter the jail and stay for short periods of time. In order to provide that service on a 24/7 basis, it will take six positions, four regular full-time positions, and then two part-time positions in order to be able to provide that continuity and have somebody there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The request is for these positions to be classified as pre-trial screeners. These positions are fully funded by the grant, so 100% of the salary and benefits. Any costs associated by the position is covered by the grant. In accordance with the grant-funded positions policy, which this board adopted in April, which addresses access, essentially, grant-funded positions, if fully funded by a grant, can be benefited. So these positions would be eligible for benefits, and they would be time-limited for the life of the grant, and abolished after the end of the grant. There's a link to the, excuse me?
Abolished after the grant ended.
Correct. I was thinking that I had a slide that showed the recommendation. It is listed on the Request for Board Action sheet, which is essentially to approve the creation of these six positions for the purpose as described in the presentation.
All right, thank you, Rachel.
I just have a comment. I'm going to reiterate what was said, and these are time-limited, which means they go away, and I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Next up, I think you should stay close, because I think you're on this one too. The county involvement in commitment of transportation agreement, and...
Hold on one second. I think we're back on line. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? We're back, Jerry.
All right, great, great. All right, and I believe we've got Sheriff Miller here as well. And so thank you for being here, Sheriff. So go ahead.
Yes, Sheriff Miller is here with us, and supporting me in the presentation is Chief Eberhart.
Great.
So this is the second of the items that I'll be before you on this evening. There are three total. This also was covered with you two weeks ago in a pre-meeting. This is IVC, or involuntary commitment transportation agreement. So as we discussed previously, the reason that this item is before you is there is a new law in effect in North Carolina, which is listed at the top of the slides, date bill 630 session law, which was passed in 2018, and it's pertaining to involuntary commitment, well, involuntary commitment more broadly, including laws related to transportation and evaluations for individuals who are identified as having a mental health, mental illness, or substance use disorder that may be a danger to themselves or others. Previously, it was optional for communities to have a formal transportation agreement. With this law, it is now required. And essentially, what that formal agreement will do is document the procedures that are in place for transportation once that individual is in custody. The requirements within the law state who shall participate in the creation of that agreement, which is including law enforcement, acute care hospitals, mental health providers, et cetera. I'm here at the podium presenting it, because behavioral health functions within Buncombe County fall under the Strategic Partnerships Department. But the legwork here is done by the Office of the Sheriff and other law enforcement organizations, which is why I'll get out of the way in just a second, and let Chief Don Eberhart talk with us about what Buncombe's agreement is going to look like. What we want to point out is that as our community came together and met, convened through the leadership of VIA, which is the LME MCO, the Local Managed Care Organization for Mental Health, Substance Abuse, and Developmental Disabilities. As we came together, we identified that the structure that we have in place currently, we did not wish to change. So as VIA produced an overall crisis plan, which will include the transportation plan once approved, which is required to be approved by the county government, the governing body of the county, and it will essentially formalize and codify the existing practices. And the structure of that agreement is on your agenda as an additional document. It's an MOU, I believe. MoA, memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement.
Good evening, Don Eberhart, Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, and thank you for the opportunity to present. Previously, state statute provided guidance on how local law enforcement would identify, take into custody, and transport mental health consumers that needed involuntary commitment process and medical treatment. So what we've done is we've basically adopted that exact same format. A lot of it is based on jurisdictional boundaries. So if there's a consumer that lives in Black Mountain, Black Mountain law enforcement will be responsible for the initial transport. If they live in the city of Asheville, city police would do so, and in Buncombe County, the sheriff's office would handle the same. One of the unique factors of this is that Buncombe County Sheriff's Office is also responsible for doing transports across the state. So any IVC, regardless of what jurisdiction, takes it to the initial evaluation site, Mission Hospital or Biltmore 356, if they're going out of county, Buncombe County Sheriff's Office would be responsible for doing that transport. We have shared the draft with all of the agencies within Buncombe County. Everyone's had a chance to look at it, provide feedback, and again, we're pretty much staying in tune with what the state statute originally proposed.
So for next steps, I will remind about a timeline thing that we talked about before, which was the original requirement of the state when this law went into effect a year ago in October 2018, was that communities prepare this transportation agreement by January. That was missed by nearly every, I think, except one county at that time. The reason that it has come up is that this is October, the deadline for completing the overall crisis agreement for the county. We've been in communication with VIA Health and with the Division of Mental Health at the state level, and they know that it's on the agenda this evening, and it is on the agenda on Board of Commissioner, on Board of Commissioner agendas throughout Western North Carolina during the month of October. So it is in line with other communities who are our peers. What will happen next, if the board approves tonight the agreement, is that we will finalize with all of the signatures, the parties to the agreement, and then submit that fully executed agreement as part of the overall crisis plan and to the parties listed on the slide.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of transportation agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next up is consideration of FY 2020 AB Tech Joint Committee Recommended Projects, and Jennifer Barnett will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So we actually have two budget amendments on your agenda this evening for new business. And so the first one is in reference to AB Tech, our AB Tech Fund. So that is our Article 46 supported fund. The request is for a total of $2,440,000. At the August 29th, 2019, meeting between AB Tech and Buncombe County's Joint Capital Advisory Committee, the committee approved the recommendation of three projects to begin in fiscal year 2020. On October 7th, 2019, the AB Tech Board of Trustees approved the projects to be brought forward to Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. The projects that are included is a total of $1.9 million, recommended for the INCA site, which includes $125,000 for a facilities assessment and master plan with the goal of attaining the designation of campus, resulting in additional funding from the state. $75,000 for first-year programmatic capital investments, and $1.7 million dedicated to new roofs for the Technology Commercialization Center. Also included in the 2.44 million is a recommended $40,000 to be available for emergency projects, and $500,000 to address the energy consumption via recommendations that were provided through an energy audit by Waste Reduction Partners in 2017. In reference to the budget amendment request itself, we are requesting that we budget expenditure dollars for the fiscal year 2020 joint committee recommended projects as outlined. There is sufficient revenues budgeted. What we are requesting is that the expenditure budgets of debt service and inter-fund transfer budgets be reduced. There were dollars, budgeted expenditure dollars available from prior years that are unspent that we would request to repurpose for the expenditure budgets for these recommended projects. So therefore, we wouldn't need to budget additional revenues. We're increasing the expenditures from those two areas to then budget the expenditures for these projects. So that's the request this evening. And I'll point out also that Dr. King and Dirk Wilmeth are here from AB Tech.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions, or is there a motion?
So moved.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
The board got the, well, the committee, the new committee, got the cart before the horse, and was going to jump around the horse and go straight to us, but then it got deferred back to the trustees. And since that point, we looked at half a million dollars for lighting. I've talked to Duke Energy, and I've talked to Dirk in the process. And Duke says they'll try to do what they can do to furnish lighting for the school. So there's a half million dollars that they're just barking at. We, the county, are right now responsible for the work at the college. We have a, we are contracted to a company that's doing 11 buildings, that has done all the design work on them, plus Vanowich's doing the work on these buildings. They seem to want to go in a different direction in this process. That's not the direction that was brought forward. We have a bill in Raleigh that's never been passed, that was sent down there for eight years. It's not went through in the process yet. And so we keep getting, you know, they say... And so we keep getting, you know, they say, well, the bill don't need to be passed. Well, I guess we can take a million and a half dollars back out of the funds going to AB Tech and just move quarter cent sales tax back into it, because we took a million and a half out of county money to try to offset, to try to help this. I didn't know that it was going to jump into this as quick as they did. There was two votes against it, myself and Jean Bell. And because it don't, you know, it's kind of like, it's in the building that we have at AB, you know, it's at INCA campus. It is a building that was given to us, but it's on land that's brownfield, and it can't be used, it can't be sold. So we're going to put a million seven hundred thousand dollars roof on a bad building. So that's kind of like putting lipstick on a pig. And, you know, I talked to Dirk the other day, said, well, we're spending $20,000 a year, you know, patching the roof. What's an old building? And we're going to spend that, you know, I'd rather spend 20, 30, 40,000 a year patching the roof than spending a million seven hundred thousand on something that's never going to be totally fixable, because the one area in it is where one of the machines was, and it's like a three-story deal. And it's, it's easy to say, let's just go ahead and take this money. But I don't know why we went through all the work to try to get it to work. What happened in the past with the past commissioner, past, not commissioners, but past staff, it's the county's money. When the vote came forward, the money belonged to the county, still does. It's just something that was so supposedly promised and period. I'm trying to keep up to the promise, but they're jumping in so quick to try to just spend it, you know. We're spending 25 million dollars to fix the buildings over there now that are deteriorating over the years. 25 million. And at the end of that deal, we should have 19 million dollars in funds so that if they would like to have a new building, or in the middle of it, if they need a new building, that we could actually go borrow the money at a local bank, Buncombe County can, because school can't borrow any money, and we can pay it off fairly quick without having a 30-year loan. So I'm back here in an area that I worked very hard for. I had three commissioners and three from over to AB Tech back here. Greg Israel put this deal together, which he's not around any longer. And, you know, it's, it's a shame, because he helped do Asheville High, got that done. He helped put this deal together with the contractors and all to be able to make this college come back to life. Because he couldn't make the buildings come back to 5Os, but he said, I think I can get them back to 3.5s. And that's, you know, we have a thing stating that right now Buncombe Tech is not high full. That is, that's not good. I want to see the school come back and thrive. That's what I want to see. It's not the money, it's I want to see the school come back and thrive. And I know you're standing there, and this is your job. And I know Dirk's job, and I know Dennis's job. But the fact is, is why do we want to do this today? I don't know. And, you know, 500,000 for lighting, well, that's just a guess, you know. There's four pieces of equipment that Duke Power bought, CNC machines, a quarter million dollars worth, is still sitting in a basement over there. And that was done years ago whenever I was, I went to Linnamar to, you know, try to get some business for the school. But I appreciate this school. You know, I'm glad to be on the board, and it's like Jean Bell, Superman. You know, a lot of the people on the board now are all brand new, totally. We set a committee up, a two and two, and somebody, I ain't got a clue who it is, and it goes to AB Tech. But I've worked awful hard on it. You know, I'm going to have to vote no on this. That's just where I'm at.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm going to be supporting it. I think it's time that INCA, the INCA campus, that people refer to it as a campus, that AB Tech makes a commitment there. And, you know, that's my, that's my main objective for voting for it. I think it's time for the, you know, those constituents that live in, out in INCA to hear that there, there's a commitment made to that campus, so. And so I'll be voting for the motion tonight.
I'll be doing the same, and I'm honored to be serving along with Commissioner Whitesides and members of the AB Tech community, and Mr. Bob Lane from our community on this committee. I feel like the committee's work's gotten off to a fast start, which is appropriate to the task before us. And I really look forward to this as one step in the process of rebuilding that relationship between the county and AB Tech. And just want to add that as a little additional context around, around the reasons why I'm excited to vote for this this evening.
I'm supporting it as well. As you all know, I work at AB Tech, and I see on a day-to-day basis the impact that these dollars can make and will make in terms of continuing to make AB Tech a wonderful place to attend college and to work. So I'm very pleased to support this tonight.
All right.
I tell you, I miss Mike Frye being over there and with his expertise. He has brought a lot to us over the years of what AB Tech and not there now. INCA campus is very important. That's mine and Joe's district, and we, we need it. But I tell you, I think it's right now the wrong time, and that's why I'm going to be voting against it.
Great.
I'll be voting for it, because I disagree with my friend. I think it is the right time. My family has been a neighbor of Buncombe Tech since 1968, when it was, what, 10 years old. And I've watched the college over, and part of the problem I see that we have is, one, we have not done a good job of preventative maintenance. That's what's put us where we are now. And I think the work we're doing now is we're starting that. And I think what's good, if we back up, we have a MOU, the county, between the county and Buncombe Tech. And if I remember right, we don't need a state law to do this, because as long as we have the MOU between both organizations, we can do it. And two, the majority of the trustees, only two voted against it, out of what, 16, 17? I don't know how many you have on the trustees.
14 voters.
14. You know, the majority, unfortunately, the majority rules. I mean, fortunately, I'm sorry. And the other is, we set up the committee, and we did. Now, I agree, it should have come from the Board of Trustees first. It didn't, but we sent it back to them to send it the way it should. So I agree, I think, you know, we should do it, and I vote for it.
All right. Thanks, everyone. I'll just add that I'm excited we have the joint committee. I think this, you know, this provides a public forum to have good communication between AB Tech and the county, and we've got representatives from both bodies in the community there. So we've had the same model between the county and the city and county schools for our, our K-12 schools for several years now, and it's been a great model for making decisions about how to invest finite resources to take care of our public, our public buildings. You know, in this case, we're looking at, you know, fixing the roofs on the buildings. It's probably one of the things that should always be at the top of the list. I mean, what if, you know, what if we had invested in Asheville High's roofs sooner? Think about how much money that could have saved. So, you know, letting your roofs fall apart is about, is about the worst thing that we can do for our public buildings if we want to take care of them long-term. This is investments, $500,000 in energy efficiency projects, but projects that will pay themselves back very quickly. So every day that we go by not doing this, we're just wasting money that we don't have to, you know, to keep the lights on, you know. And this will free up money that can be invested into the operations of the college for our teachers and programming, rather than just literally paying way more than we need to to keep the lights on. So these are just a bunch of great projects, and I'm excited they're moving ahead. I appreciate everyone's work to, to bring this specific recommendation forward, and so I'll support it as well.
Well, one more thing.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
We had a committee, Brownie. I was on it, Robert was on it, myself was on it, and then we had, Dennis was there, and Dirk was there.
Were those public meetings that you held? Because you are, by state law, you are supposed to have public meetings if you form in a committee of this body. Was the public invited to those meetings?
There were some public in there.
No, they were not. And that is not even legal. So this is the right way to do it, having a joint committee that's approved in public and that does its business in public. That's the right way to make these decisions.
So Dennis said that was not legal?
It is, it is not legal to form a subcommittee of this body and have private meetings. That is absolutely correct.
Well, I know one thing about AB Tech over there, if you call in, you know, as a trustee, you can't vote on the phone. You can here, but you can't over there. So you need to show up at the committees if you're going to vote.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? We did have a motion. We've got a motion. All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right. All right. Passes five to two. Thank you. And we've got one more regarding the farmland preservation state award funding.
Yes. So this is a request for a budget amendment to our special projects fund. Attached to the agenda are the award letters with the, for the associated farmland tracks. But we are requesting on behalf of Buncombe County Soil and Water Conservation to budget pass-through funding from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services for the following projects in their listed amounts. Charles Brown Preservation for $268,950. Hart Curry Preservation Hart Track and Hart Curry Preservation Curry Track totaling And then the Aubrey Wells Preservation for $189,500. For all of these preservation tracks, Buncombe County, you all have already approved and budgeted the county match portions, which are additionally listed in the information in the request for board action. So what we are requesting to do is to budget the expenditures and the revenues in this fund so that we can receive those dollars from the state and pass them back through to the, to the landowner.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, we did add one additional item to new business, which was a presentation on proposed nonprofit funding guidelines. And Rachel Nightgard will get us started on this. And this is going to be an informational discussion only. We can consider this at our next meeting if we want to take action on it.
Hello again. I'm here this evening to talk about nonprofit funding in two parts. And I'll wait for the presentation to come up. The first part is to address a commissioner request to update the strategic partnership grants funding process. As you remember, back in the spring, as we were moving through the funding allocation process for FY '20, there was a fair amount of discussion. I believe we were in a pre-meeting setting downstairs in this building in the ground floor conference room, saying what we had come up with for how to move through the FY '20 process, but for FY '21, we wanted some recommendations for a revamped process. So this is a first look at that, some recommendations on that process. And following that meeting, Commissioner Edwards had contact, reached out to staff and said that you were willing to bring some of your grant-making and fundraising professional expertise into the process. And so we've consulted with Amanda throughout the recommendation development process, and she's going to assist me when we get to those recommendations. The second half of the conversation is related to the guidelines for funding of nonprofit agencies. This is resolution that's in place that addresses more broadly than just this one grant program, guidelines for funding nonprofit organizations. So for the first objective, the, the grant process, which is the strategic partnership grant process. These grants are annual grants to nonprofit organizations. Organizations apply to Buncombe County. We open those applications in December, and they submit by February. The funding is approved by July 1 and runs July through June in alignment with our fiscal year. And we have those grants associated with either our strategic priorities or goals within the county's sustainability plan. This funding, as you know, is directly decided by commissioners. And once those grants are made, we administer those as performance contracts. Some things that are strong about the current state, what's working well, we do have a standardized application form. The performance contracts component of the process works very well. We have a way to transfer the grant application into a scope of work that organizations contract for, including individual measures, performance measures, that they can be evaluated on. That monitoring of performance includes not just program, but also fiscal performance. And that performance reporting is included in an online dashboard that's published to the, to the internet and shared to the Board of Commissioners, and connecting it within the Strategic Partnerships Department, where some of our county's other grant programs has been working well. There are some things that are, that could be improved or are challenges about the process. There is fluctuation from year to year for how commissioners decide the grants. The rationale for the grant decisions is not standardized, so different commissioners utilize different rationale for their recommendations. We also don't tightly adhere to process, so we have an application deadline, but we accept late applications in, on an inconsistent basis. So that makes it tough for organizations to know if they're able to come in after deadline or not. Not all organizations that are funded through this grant process are nonprofit organizations. So we're using this as a mechanism to funnel funding to projects that Buncombe County wishes to provide grants to that may be associated with public organizations that, that are sort of mixed in with the grants to nonprofits. And finally, the last bullet listed here is something that the Board of Commissioners has discussed. Commissioner Belcher, I've been here over the years with you in that seat, and one of the items that has come up is how organizations can be overly dependent on county grants, and that could be how long a group has been funded, or a project has been funded, or it could be how much of that group's funding comes from this grant source. Was there a question before I continue? Good.
What are examples of groups that are not nonprofits?
The two that I, one that I can think of off the top of my mind is the Historic Resources Commission, which is at the city of Asheville. So we, we route funding to the city through this grant process. That's the one that comes to mind, and I feel like there may be others.
There's also the Nature Center, which is kind of similar, right?
Yeah. The Nature Center goes to the Friends of the Nature Center, which is a 501(c)(3).
Okay. Got it.
I'd have to look at the list again, but I will.
All right. Thanks.
So recommendations, I'm going to stay here, but pass to Commissioner Edwards.
So before we jump into that, what we did before we developed the recommendations was we looked to the school of government for guidance and best practices in terms of nonprofit funding via counties. We also dug really deep and looked at what other counties across North Carolina were doing that seemed to be working and follow the best practices there. So we brainstormed the recommendations based on all of the research that we did to bring forward to you all, and the pros and cons of what those recommendations look like. So with that said, we have eight recommendations that we're bringing forward tonight. And the first is adhering to the timeline. Applications open in December, they're due in February, and there will be no more acceptance of late applications. And that is very standard across granting organizations. Confirm previous year funding as grant budget. Number three, we'll align grants to goals in our soon-to-be-new strategic plan, and take a look that those organizations are fitting within that strategic plan and helping us meet the goals that we set forward. and helping us meet the goals that we set forward as commissioners. We will limit funding to nonprofit organizations that have been in existence for a minimum of two years. So no brand-new organizations will receive funding. Gives us a little bit of time to ensure that they have the capacity to do the work that they say that they're going to do for us. We will limit grant funding to three years for a single project. That will start with the FY '21 funding. So we'll have a new slate, everything will be wiped clean for the organizations who have been receiving funding. Funding will be limited to less than 30% of the overall organization's budget. Part of the reason for that is to look at the diversification of funding streams for the nonprofit organizations. That if they have that diversity, then it shows us that there's a lot of community support, other organizations granting support. That shows that they're meeting their goals and moving forward that way. We will conduct a legal review to confirm that all projects meet the public purpose, that the county has authority to spend funds on. And then the final recommendation we have is to establish a grants committee. So we did consider several options, and here they are. We could maintain the current process where the seven of us decide directly. We could have a subcommittee of commissioners making the decisions. We could also have a committee that includes county staff. And the fourth option is a committee of community volunteers and looking at some participatory budgeting, decision-making through that process. So what we would like to bring forward to you all this evening is the fourth recommendation to consider. We would establish a nine-member committee of community volunteers who will review the applications and recommend grant funding. Members will apply to and will be appointed by each of us for those terms. And we'll have three-year staggered terms. Representation will include representation from our four strategic focus areas. Environmental stewardship, educated and capable community, vibrant economy, and resident well-being. There will be very clear conflict of interest policies that members adhere to. So, for example, no current or recent board officer. So a chairperson, vice chair, anyone who has served on the executive committee of that organization or a nonprofit organization will not be eligible to be appointed by us for this committee. They can be a member of a board, but just not serving in a leadership capacity. Any questions so far?
I don't know what I just did. Sorry about that.
Clarifying question.
I've got a few.
First of all, thank, thank you all for the heavy lift of this work. Regarding the eight recommendations, just a quick clarification. Number five was no more than three years of funding for a single project. Does that mean also for a single organization or just a project within the organization?
I take that with, to mean project within the organization.
Thanks.
I don't, did I misinterpret that, Rachel? Okay.
Okay, thank you. All of this is up for discussion, but that's, that's the way it's currently written.
Thanks.
Sorry about what I did to the slides, but you were headed toward this one. Back to me?
Back to you.
Okay. So the committee would be responsible for creating a grant funding recommendation to this body, to the Board of Commissioners, for consideration as of, as part of the annual budgeting process. That's consistent with how it works for other grant funds, such as the early childhood fund or the aging funds. Those are county dollars that are allocated through committee but approved as grants by this board. A committee of this type would follow an open process, meaning all of their materials and all of their meetings accessible and open to the public. We reviewed pros and cons of the in-person presentation or interview for finalists and think that it does bring some value and would continue to have that as part of the process. Committee reviewers would, would use a scoring process and score independently using an online grant software and a points-based scoring system, which is typical for some of those other grant processes that I mentioned a minute ago. The types of criteria, it's difficult to use, here we go. The types of criteria that would be included in that scoring tool would include, for example, alignment to the commissioner goals, public purpose and community need, impact and cost effectiveness, project plan, demographics or who is being served by the project or the organization. The performance outputs, outcomes, demonstrated success, either with previous county grant or with other funding sources in that project. The community partnerships and community collaboration would be taken into consideration as well as the ability to leverage other funding. And a review of the overall financial health and sustainability of that, of the grantee organization, as well as connection to any other potential county funding or contractual relationship would be something we evaluate. So, before we have discussion about this half of the presentation, quick review of the timeline. We are on the far left at the, we're not in the pre-meeting, we're in the regular meeting, but this is an informational presentation. Provided that we leave here with some consensus about what could be brought back for a vote in a couple, in three weeks at your next meeting. That would occur on November 5. We would open, prepare the application and open it up for organizations by December. Hold that grant writing workshop. Organizations would submit grant applications by February. Meanwhile, the grant committee would be applying and appointed. And grant review would occur between February and May so that by the time we get to budget message, there's an opportunity to hear those grant recommendations and have them included as part of the vote to adopt budget. So I'll pass it to the chair to facilitate discussion.
All right, thanks. Again, not voting on this this evening, but just to kind of get the ideas on the table. So, any other questions from commissioners?
I've got just a couple comments. So, congratulations on giving me enough information to make my head explode tonight. That was a lot of change. Overall, I, I kind of think I like it, okay? The only thing I don't see that has been a problem for me over the several years in this process is, and I would want to see it personally. I would want to see a clear, I don't know how you would, how you would work it, I mean, it can be done. I would like a clear position on equity of funding in all districts. Okay, because the need is great and the need is throughout, throughout Buncombe County. That's been kind of, that's been tough, you know? And I don't know that you could ever have, you know, right, you know, we have three districts. I don't know that you could ever have a third, a third, a third, you know? But, but just an equity in, in that funding. You know, a lot, some people apply, some people don't, some people, you know? I don't know if we get the information out to all the four corners, you know, as well as we probably could.
Commissioner, can I ask a question on that equity?
Yeah.
Is it equity in funding to the organization or equity in servants? So make sure that our population that we serve is equitable, distributed across the county and not in one area over the other.
So it's a, it's, I think the latter. If, if we're going to spend $3 million, I'm just, a million dollars in each district. Now, I know I'm being silly and that's not going to happen, you know, exactly that way. But it shouldn't be, you know, two and a half in one area and, you know, and 250 here and 250. I mean, we just need to be, we need to be really careful. And I, and I think we probably should look at very carefully some of the ones. I don't want to pull the rug out from under a good organization. And I think you've got some safety nets in there for that. And I love taking it out of the hands of the commissioners, the way that we've been doing it. Because some of us would be familiar with some of them and some of us, you know, wouldn't be familiar. Now, when I, when I, when I say that, you know, we're, we still have to support it and we still have to vote on it. You know, it doesn't need to disappear somewhere where we can't see it. I mean, we still need to be part of the decision, but I don't know. I mean, some of it I like, some of it's, but, you know? I applaud you for taking a shot at bringing us something back.
For me, a huge piece of moving forward on this was after we had several applicants speak to us about them not understanding or the process for application and feeling like they had to come speak to us to really advocate for funding for themselves. It didn't feel that it was very equitable in terms of those organizations. So I wanted to work with Rachel and the staff to really create a very transparent, open, equitable for every organization in Buncombe County to have the opportunity to apply for funds. I do agree, Commissioner Belcher, I think we have an opportunity to reach other organizations that may not typically apply for county grant funding. So maybe a little bit of opportunity to advertise and do a little more relationship building with those organizations to encourage them to apply for funding versus just the, the largest nonprofits in our community. So I think we have some opportunity.
Yeah, and you know, we've, we've been funding some community centers out of this also. I mean, I don't, I don't want, I don't want the community centers to feel like that they're, they're being left out of the, of this process. And so, I mean, we'll have to see. We have to, we'll have to see. I mean, they have to have an opportunity to be able to, to request funding, you know, just as an example. And do they fit? Do they have to come up with a new project every year to be able to ask for money? I mean, we don't want them doing that. I don't want everybody out there having to come up, you know? And, see, I have some concerns, but like I said, man, I, I am glad y'all took a shot at it because the one slide that had all the eight, had like eight issues. I was like, check, check, check. And that was, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty bold for us to say that. You know, that the process, the process is flawed.
I want to thank you because I've not liked this process. Ever, not since I've been on the board. And I had to jump through hoops before coming on the board with this process. And I always felt that it was just too darn political. And whoever would holler the loudest or whatever would get it. And it was not necessarily, a lot of organizations were lost in the shuffle, I felt. And even after being on here, not liked it. The other thing I feel, if we follow our strategic priorities, hopefully that will do some of your concerns, Jill. Because we should be giving the organizations who are making a difference, not, you know, in the whole county, just not in one area, whatever. I think that's going to be critical too. And if we tied in with our priorities, that's for the whole county, not just for one district. You know, we can hopefully get the biggest bang for our buck doing it that way. But we need to discuss that, I agree. But overall, I could vote on it tonight. I like what I see. I mean, we're making headway and it's, it's transparent. We're including the community in it. And I had some concerns about that before we went to pre-K. We started that committee. And if that's any indication of what we'll have, it's going to work fine. Because we have people around the table, well, all of them are in the childcare business. But I've no, I've been pleasantly surprised that everybody is open and, you know, handle all of our, the requests we've had in a professional way and in a fair way. But I like what I see. Thank you both for a job well done, I think.
I'm going to say one other thing, then I'm going to hush and let my other commissioners talk. I do have a concern about the, the committee. You know, I was voted to represent the entire county as well as my district and bring information to the commission that you may not have, that, that I'm familiar with because my constituents talk to me, my constituents come and see me. And I want to, I do not, I want to make sure that the committee, the committee does not take that away. And that, that somehow that, you know, we're still part, we're still part of that process. And it's not, it's not politics, it's, it's representation. Because there are some things, you know, some people that will bring an issue to Brownie and there are some people that'll bring something, a need to me. And sometimes they bring it to both. And I just want to make sure that if we, if we improve the policy and we tighten up on the, on the requirements and we hold people accountable to their deadlines, I'm all for all that. I just want to make sure that the entire county is represented in the funding, so.
Are there any other questions or feedback at this point?
There is a second half of the presentation.
There's more? Okay.
Sorry. In order to implement these changes, we have a companion resolution which would need to be adopted by the Board of Commissioners.
You're not doing that tonight.
You're not doing it tonight. This is to let you know what's coming. So I'll do a.
Just, just, let's just finish up.
What, what's your guidance?
Yeah, keep going, keep going.
I just pressed forward a bunch of times. All right, so we have a resolution on the books. Its number is up on the top of the screen. This would be in your packet for the next meeting. The resolution was originally established in 2008. It was amended in 2013. It establishes guidelines for the funding of nonprofit organizations and institutes some structure for how that works. Similar to the grant funding process, there are some things about this resolution that work well, that are strengths that we would want to keep and build on, particularly the emphasis on accountability. So this is the financial accountability, as well as the program performance accountability and the transparency. There are, like the grant process, some areas where it could be improved. For example, it is unclear which of the county's multiple grant programs this provides guidance on. So we have, for example, strategic partnership grants. That's the grant process we just talked about. There's also affordable housing grants, which are administered through our planning department. We have community recreation grants through the recreation department. Isaac Coleman and Tipping Point Grants, early childhood funding. Buncombe County has a portfolio of grants and the resolution isn't clear as currently written. As such, the funding eligibility criteria is typical, is difficult to apply. Does a capital requirement within this resolution apply to capital investments in affordable housing to nonprofit organizations or only in strategic partnerships, for example? And we don't have consistent practices across the organization. We would like to look to a resolution to provide that guidance for our departments for our contracting with the grants. So we want to bring towards, bring back for you a resolution that acknowledges the multiple grant programs that provide public funds to nonprofit organizations and that establish criteria that will apply to all, regardless of which one. What it would do is require that every grant process have a published, well-defined, accountable process for its grant awards. So each grant program would have guidance on who's eligible, what type of program, how to apply, how the grant decisions are awarded, et cetera. And we would bring, in consistent practice across the organization, that mechanism of the performance contract following a grant award, because that has been successful for us where we've used it so far. The main change related to financials, our current guidance is difficult to apply as, as written because it says every nonprofit should have an audit. Full audits are prohibitive for some organizations because of the cost and the time, the resources needed. It is common across, across grant making to have a tiered structure. So we would still collect IRS tax filings or the Form 990s from these nonprofits. But then, according to the size of their organization, we could collect an audit, a review, or a compilation with a process for them to request a waiver to use another third-party provided document if those are not available. So a smaller organization, a community center, or somebody with very small revenues that doesn't have one of the requested items might apply and provide bank statements and profit and loss statements or other statements of their financials for our review as part of the process. And so that is a change that would come to you on November 5th, in three weeks, according to this timeline, on the same evening as the strategic partnership grant recommendation.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Only about ten more slides.
Okay. So, so just, so just a, a question. So, but the recommendation here is that this would apply to, well, you're, you're talking about some guidelines that would be applied sort of across all grant making, you know, platforms, but in terms of this committee of nine people, they would be only advising on what we currently call our strategic grants, not these other sources of, of community funding that we also have.
Because all of these other grant programs already have a body, that, a committee that, and a process for deciding those awards.
Okay. Other questions?
Um, just going back for a sec, as y'all, uh, kinda do another pass maybe, it, could, I would be interested in thoughts on, um, maybe two categories of applicants. One are applicants that apply for both strategic partnership grants and receive HHS grants from the county. And I feel like those have in years past been handled in different ways. So thinking about that. And then the other would be, I think, Commissioner Belcher, I, I also thought right away about community centers, um, and, um, maybe thinking about, are there other fun, are there other grantees that it would be very typical to think of a, of a kinda consistent line of public funding as a central source of support for their work? If that makes sense? Like, and other communities museums, for instance, receive kind of annualized funding publicly. So just thinking about, are there, is there sort of a subcategory of entities like that for whom the project guidelines may or may not be quite as aligned?
Well, yeah.
And, and the answer might be no, but just, you might have already thought that through, but those are the categories I'm thinking of.
To the first point, um, we'll, we'll take all of these into consideration and reflect. Um, Health and Human Services does not currently have and operate any grant programs where they're granting county dollars.
I'm sorry, I meant contracts, I'm sorry.
They do have purchase of service contracts and we would definitely want to take into account if an organization is already contracted through a purchase of service, how that connects to-
Yeah, that was what I was trying to articulate, thanks.
But, I mean, you can, I mean, those are different words, right? But those are grants, right? I mean, those are funds to nonprofit organizations and they, and they, and they do things, you know, for, I mean, so I, I know you're, I get the distinction, but they're grants too, right? And there's a contract that goes with them, so-
It is a, it's a conversation that we've had a lot over the years because they are so related. We see them as different where a, a contract is initiated by the county wanting a service and procuring that service versus a grant which is sort of developed at the community level and looking for funding from the county, but they become nuanced and they have, they have in the past for us to a great extent. We want to be a lot more clear with that in the future.
But the reality is, a lot of things have been funded, almost all good, right, through HHS for community projects that are not, we're not legally required to do. They were seen as good ideas that, like, it'd be great to see them happen. So, I mean, I just, I have always felt like, like what gets funded under strategic priorities and what gets funded in some cases through HHS, they could, uh, the distinctions aren't, don't seem so obvious all the time. So I just, I think that is part of the conversation of just kind of, if we have X amount of money to fund things that we don't have to do, but we, we wanna do, you know, how do we think through all of that? So-
Agree.
Yeah.
I think the other, the other thing too, in, in, in business, the definition of it, there's a definition of employee and a, and a con- and a contractor, right? And if, if the county is your only source of money, you're an employee of the county. It's not a, you're not a contractor, right? Yeah. Yeah, there's some other terms, but it's, anyhow, we're having that conversation, so it's kinda cool.
So we will take this back and, uh, taking into consideration your thoughts and feedback. Feel free to reach out if you have other thoughts, um, later on.
You know, just one, one last observation here. I do think that, um, I mean, I'm open to this. I think there's just pros and cons to all these different ways of doing it. You know, the, um, this is very time consuming on us for what is, at the end of the day, a fairly modest percentage of the budget. But I don't think there's all downside for having it, these, some of these decisions made from a, from a, an elected body. And you say it's a political body, it also means it's, it's an, it's an elected by the people body of the community. And, um, and as Joe said, a lot of people, I mean, I think we hear a lot of stuff that just, when you're in this job, you hear stuff that just, you know, not everyone else walking around town is, is, uh, you know, gets, uh, the benefit of. So I, I see, I see trade-offs, but, um, I think there has been, I think this, we've always been dissatisfied with the way we do it. Whether we might be equally unsatisfied with a different way, I guess we'll see as we kind of look at, look at doing it differently, but I think it's a good discussion. So thanks to, appreciate everyone's work on kinda bringing some ideas forward ahead of the budget cycle to kind of think through how we wanna try it next time, okay? Yeah. All right. Uh, that concludes all of our regular, uh, business items. We don't have any board appointments this meeting. So, um, we move to, um, public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to talk to the board? Mr. Yelton?
I've heard transparency till I'm about ready to puke. Because I don't see transparency, folks. I see a presentation just made that you say you already have in your package that wasn't put on the internet. That's the second time we've had that crap happen. The second time from the public, okay? So I think something is bad, wrong here in your little details. You don't wanna hear what I gotta say, Brownie, I know it and I don't really care, cause I'm gonna say it till you shut me up because you, you, you took four issues tonight and voted on them and asked for no public input. Yet you choose somebody out wanting transparency? You know what I say to that? Bull. This is public comment. And I can say what I feel like saying unless we are a communistic country. Now, your county manager made a great comment tonight on this deal about evaluating nonprofits. One of the best things I heard her say. It's the service that gets distributed to equal areas of the county that you're after, Joe. It's the service. And if your nonprofit can't tell you where they're gonna provide their service, you don't need to be funding them. And, you know, common sense is just, gone. I don't hear it ninety percent of the time here. I mean, y'all could stretch out something, you know, how, how to pull a rubber band and probably talk about it for five hours and then tell why you're gonna vote the way you're gonna vote. But, you know, it, it's so simple on nonprofits. And I did this years ago, and when I say it, you sure as heck ain't gonna do it. Anybody that wants my money and the taxpayers' money should have to open their books, period. Not just what little thing they're funding, cause they can hide something over here and hide something over here and give that to somebody else and it can go over here on this line. And guess what? That's what accounting is, hiding the money. An audit doesn't prove anything. Look how long the county was audited and what did we find out? None of your auditions were worth of crap. So auditing doesn't prove anything, not at all. So, but did I hear somebody on this commission up here say, I worked with AB Tech and they voted to give them more money? I don't know if I heard that or not. I just kinda confused on that.
All right, thanks. Um, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this opportunity, Cezette Grindstaff, on behalf of Asheville Ride for Kids and the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation. Thirteen children each day are diagnosed with a brain tumor. Thirteen lives will be changed forever. Brain tumors are the deadliest childhood cancer and the deadliest disease facing our children in the United States. You can make a difference in these children's lives. You can change these statistics. I'm here to talk about the Asheville Ride for Kids benefiting the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation. Asheville Ride for Kids is an event that does two things. It raises funds for the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation and it's a program that helps families that have kids with brain tumors. Let me explain both. The Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation funds through fundraising, life-saving research, feeling ways to find better treatments, and ultimately a cure. The Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation has, through fundraising, supplied family support programs like emergency financial aid, family camps, peer-to-peer counseling, and event programs like the Asheville Ride for Kids. I've seen how therapeutic it can be for kid and their family to attend one of these events, which brings me to the Asheville Ride for Kids. We need, no, the kids need, help changing those statistics I said earlier. And the way we can do that, besides donating and fundraising, is to volunteer in planning these events. We have a kickoff rally where you can come and learn more about how you can be a part of these life-changing events and how you can make a difference in these kids' lives. So I invite you to come out and join us on November 2nd, and I have a flyer with more information on how you can change these children's lives.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. If you'd like to leave that with our clerk, uh, you're welcome to do so. Thank you very much for, um, what you're doing. All right, anybody else? Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have you ever seen or heard or felt in your family when a child was taken from your family or your loved one to DSS custody or some means of government intervening? Have you ever had that feeling, that gut-wrenching feeling that just kinda tore you apart? You need to think about it. The world was shocked that 2,000 children, immigrants, were separated from their parents in a span of two months. But they're ignoring the fact that 2,000 American children are taken from their families every three days. Those are not my statistics, those are real. Those are for parentalrights.org. These, this is real. You saw how the Democrat Party smeared Mr. Trump, President Trump, how they smeared him for doing the 2,000 kids of the immigrants. And they plastered him, made him look like he'd done the unpardonable sin. Now, I want you commissioners to think about it. Who is profiting from this? It was a political move, just like we've seen tonight. There's political moves going on that's not good. We need to be fastened on the truth and what we can do to change, to help people. Who profits from taking of these children? Hospitals, doctors, counselors, courts, lawyers, judges, and politicians? We should be concerned about the human trafficking of our children, sixteen hundred a year in Buncombe County for twenty years. What does that say to you about your job as a commissioner and your responsibility to make sure human trafficking is stopped? We're talking about some sobering things here. What you heard tonight on the Justice Center, I told you that was going to happen, just like we just, they, they told you, how the numbers was gonna go up considerably. Now, look at the numbers of DSS compared to the numbers that you heard from them. They're not telling all the numbers. They're telling you what they're taking in. There's nobody gonna argue about the numbers I'm giving you on the sixteen hundred, cause I've got the facts and I can back it up. So you need to be thinking the state is doing, they're screwing you. The state is.
All right. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of quick announcements. On October 24th at 1:00 PM, the UNC School of Government quasi-judicial training will be held at 200 College Street, first floor conference room in downtown Asheville. November 5th at 3:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their pre-meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And on November 5th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their regularly scheduled meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And-
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
I just got condemned a minute ago for having something in the back room that was supposedly I got a whole folder full of stuff with you and Jeremiah, which you're not supposed to be telling staff what to do, and that's illegal. So I guess we're playing the same game? But you, you know, he didn't know anything about solar panels. Now he does, because of you. That's what you do for a living. You know, I talked to Wells and them, that's what you do for a living. He, he worked in a, in, uh, one of the departments on, on the fourth floor. He didn't have a clue, but here I've got all this information and I do mark out stuff pretty good. And this is you. I wanna meet you, you know, you know, I need to meet with you. I'm on vacation, but it's gonna happen when I get back. You need to talk to Julie Mayfield, she can tell you how to get grants. It's all here. So, we, we're not supposed to instruct staff on what to do. I don't, but you sure do.
Yep. All right. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. You know, I do absolutely stand by what I said earlier. Forming, if you, if we form a committee of this commission, a couple of things need to happen. First, it needs to be voted on by this commission. That never happened. And then it must be held in public. And it is a violation of the state's public meeting laws to not do that. So I, I absolutely stand by that. And, um, and I've made it no secret that I'm an advocate for clean renewable energy and, and, and-
That's the way you make it live.
I read that and I'll, and I'll support that as long as I'm here. So-
That's the way you make it live. Okay? You go out of the room when Jeremiah speaks, but you got it pretty well, Brownie.
Okay. All right. Um, yes, ma'am.
Can I make an announcement real quickly?
Sure.
Tonight at the Board of Elections, um, Trina Villas, our Elections Director, attended her resignation, her retirement. She's actually got stolen by the state, so she's gonna go to the state of elections. You know they were going through a change. So she was stolen but, from us to go work for the state office. So she'll be here through the November elections, but shortly after that, she'll be moving on to the state.
Thank you for letting us know. One last announcement before we go. I would like to say how surprised and disappointed I was to hear yesterday that Jennifer Bowman with the Asheville Citizen Times is going to be leaving Western North Carolina in a couple of weeks. And, uh, so I just wanted to acknowledge the work that Jennifer has done over the last couple of years faithfully covering the issues of Buncombe County. Uh, you know, in this role, there might have been a couple of occasions when I didn't agree with every way that a particular article might get framed. Uh, but Jennifer, you've done a great job, uh, covering the county during a really important time. And so I just wanted to say thank you for what you've done and, um, and best wishes. I know you, uh, you still live in San Diego and are going back there, so, um, best wishes and everything going forward for you and your, your family. All right. All right. With that, we are adjourned.